Okay, now we got YouTube and the Zoom recording, so we're good to start.
All right. Great, so I will call the meeting to order. Let me just roll call, please.
Mayor Canos?
Here.
Mr. Amalang?
Here.
Ms. Greenfield?
Here.
Ms. McCready? Absent at the moment. Mr. McQueen?
I'm here.
Mr. Barrow?
Here.
Ms. Mara?
Here.
And Ms. McCready just entered the meeting.
Okay, great. Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News and Courier News file with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on July 25th, 2023. Actually, I have a flag. Ta-da, all right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I've got my flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, now I will do my required reading. Welcome to the August 10th, 2023 special meeting of the Burnsville Borough Council. This meeting is being conducted on Zoom and it is being broadcast live on YouTube. Members of the public attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at the appropriate time during the meeting in accordance with the following guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open session on the agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language or language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their three minutes of allotted time or if they make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers shall state their names and addresses before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they may be seen by members of the governing body and other members of the audience. All right, got through that. So, thank you all for attending tonight. The council has had probably about seven public meetings on the Palmer project. Tonight's presentation is the culmination of a lengthy and thoughtful process on the part of the council to create this public-private partnership. The council's vision for the downtown is to create a sense of place to bring economic vitality to the downtown and to make the downtown more walkable and more pedestrian-friendly. So the presentation that you'll see tonight is the design that Advanced Realty and their architects have created towards that vision. Please keep in mind that this is only a concept plan. Final plans will be reviewed in detail by the planning board and those meetings will also be in public. And now I would like to introduce Peter Cocozziello of Advanced Realty. Peter, where are you? I saw you.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. And thank you to the rest of the council for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be here tonight and as I reflected on this journey, I decided to share a quick story with you. A few years ago, I moved to a house that had a magnificent tree and I constantly kept looking at that tree as a silent witness to time. And I kept telling my kids that this tree stood tall because somebody planted it a long time ago. But as time went on, the tree eventually wound up dying and unfortunately we had to cut it down. So I took that as an opportunity to sit with them and teach them a really important lesson. And together we went outside and planted a small sapling. And my daughter said to me, she said, Daddy, why didn't you just get a bigger tree like the tree we had before? Why, why'd you have to get this little tree? And I told her that the gift that we're given is to sit here and nurture this tree for the future so people long after us can enjoy it just like we enjoyed the tree that was here before. And I constantly think of that and the idea of trees and planting and nature as something that really applies to the future. And it's how we shape our community and how we create spaces and places that really outlive us. And our decisions today aren't just for us. They're really gifts to the residents of tomorrow. And that's really why you're all here. Because you all care about the next generation immensely. And as a real estate developer, I'm thrilled to contribute to this community's future. I feel this new project isn't just about buildings. It's more about breathing life into our downtown and making it a safer place and connecting it to all of us. It's about adding an architectural gem to our community and ultimately something we'll all be proud to pass by each and every day. And here's where the excitement grows even further. And I'm truly honored to introduce you to the masterminds behind this endeavor, the renowned Robert A. M. Stern Architects. His esteem firm is known for crafting some of the most breathtaking buildings across the country. And together we're weaving a vision of tomorrow, a vision that merges the beauty of the past with the possibilities of the future. Just like the little tree that my daughter and I planted, it's, it's an investment in to what something is going to be and a promise of something better for each and every generation that comes after us. So here's to the future, to creating a legacy that goes beyond our time and to building a place where joy thrives and to leaving a mark that future generations will hopefully look back and thank us for. And now I'm really excited to introduce you to the extraordinary team at Robert A. M. Stern Architects. And just a little bit about Robert A. M. Stern Architects. They're a 270-person firm of architects and interior designers, have an immense supporting staff, and over a 50-year history and a outstanding international reputation as a leading design firm with wide experience in high-end residential, commercial, and institutional work. As the firm's practice has really diversified and evolved over time and its geographical scope has widened substantially to include Europe, Asia, and South America. But they're based out of New York and they, they live and breathe a lot of small-town communities and really creating outstanding places. And they do that by having an immense attention to detail and a strong commitment to design and quality, which has earned international recognition and numerous awards and citations for their design excellence, including national honor awards at the American Institute of Architects and a lengthening list of repeat real estate development clients and institutions. Their, their particular focus is, is creating places and town planning. And they've won awards from the Congress of New Urbanism and specifically recently for the Dutch Town Center in Anaheim. So with us this evening, we have Kevin Smith and Will Gridley. Kevin joined Ramza in 1999 and has been a partner in the firm since. He's responsible for design and management of institutional, commercial, and high-end residential projects. He went to Yale where he received his Bachelor of Architecture. And a lot of his projects have been focused in a range from university campuses to museums of the American Revolution, as well as a bunch of other high-end residential and commercial projects across the United States and Europe. Will's experience spans broadly across higher education and multifamily, commercial, and mixed-use types of buildings. He earned his Bachelor of Science degrees from Bucknell and his Masters in Architecture from Yale and shared his knowledge of building in historic districts in a lecture at the Institute of Classical Art and Architecture. And I really enjoyed very much the opportunity to work with Kevin and Will. And I think that each and every one of you will find some of their, their designs and a lot of the thought process, the wind behind why certain things look a certain way and really the feeling that they're trying to instill within our community is one that I feel very strongly future generations will be very proud of. So I'd like to introduce you to Kevin and Will.
Thank you so much, Peter. And Will is, is going to be brave and share, share the screen. We really look forward to showing you what, how our thought has, has come along here and then just tonight, we're going to show you a little bit of, of our work of just understanding the site, which is so important and understanding also all the consultation that's going on quite some time around this site. We are experts and passionate about the history of architecture. And so we like to look back at the place and particularly the, what, what is, what does Burnsville mean to us as, as architects? And, you know, spoiler alert, it's really a very special place in, in the history of architecture and looked at other projects that we felt could help inform this design. And then we're going to show you what, what we've come up with. So with that, we're going to just launch in. Here is the site. Everyone, I'm sure knows, knows it. And it's an extremely important corner adjacent to the railroad tracks, but is really the face of Alcott Square. And one of the, the things that we felt were really important was to maintain the vista that there is from Mindbrook Road looking up from the train station. It, it seemed also very important to us to have something that is a more coherent point of entry when you're coming up or coming down the hill, particularly on Mount Airy Road. And to do that, to get the parking entry off of Mount Airy Road, which is a problem for, for traffic and to provide a way to get loading and all those sort of things that you have to, have to have out of sight and to improve that pedestrian experience along Mount Airy Road. We've come to have a warm heart, part in our heart for the Palmer Building, although, although it is actually a reconstruction of the historic building, it is this, it has a historical memory and is a terminus both of Mindbrook and Anderson Hill Road. We know, I've stood in that corner on, next to the Palmer Building and did not feel very safe. So really want to fix that pedestrian condition, the three feet of sidewalk. And then along Morris Town Road to expand and activate this, the streetscape, which is now very chopped up. Doesn't really feel like a, a town, at, at the edge of the downtown of an important town. Next. And then retail really wants multiple sides and to, Alcott Square happens to be sort of a triangle, but we feel it's really important for retail to work to, for all three sides of Alcott Square to be completed to, to a little more vibrancy and have a reason to walk all the way around. And finally, we were very blessed to be asked to create a signature town center building, which I think will help make the, the, increase the sense of place in, in the center of Burnsville. Next. So I, I mentioned that we we love burners because we love, there, there's a, there's a really special feeling of architecture there. And, you know, starting with the buildings that are downtown, the Burners Inn and the train station in these wonderful stone buildings that was the kind of romance of, of, I guess, to New Yorkers felt like the wilds. And it continued in this, the Old Stone Hotel. All these buildings being around are really wonderful. And they really, if part of what went on, these very important architects who did many, many monuments in New York that we have put in our, our own books on, on the history of art, New York architecture, had their houses and did houses in, in Burnsville. And so they're really high caliber of, of architecture, which hopefully holds us to a very high standard as well. And we looked also outside of Burnsville for inspiration of buildings in other towns around New England and that it really have the same sort of romance of, of the stone and in, including our own project at the top right, redoing the downtown of Darien, Connecticut. But that really are ways that feel like towns, but also have a little bit of urbanity and the, this kind of streetscape at the, at the base. So if you go to the next, here's our proposal on, you know, we'll, to start with, you'll see the, the turquoise is 10, about 10,000 square feet of retail space, which we're maximizing the frontage. That's basically the entire frontal, frontage along Morris Town Road and around the edge of, of Mindbrook. And there are, as we're proposing, 68 apartments, which will help give the whole develop, the whole downtown, a few more footfalls on the street and increase its vibrancy. They're all rather large apartments, you'll note, and if you could read the eye test, that is that chart at the bottom, but the, you know, two bedrooms are not, are not small. For, for apartment standards, they're over 1,200 square feet. And we have some exceptionally large apartments within this. Next. And the really important thing to us to, to start with was to increase this public realm. So the, the sidewalk is in the lighter, lighter gold and the darker gold is showing a substantial amount of usable, publicly accessible frontage, which is three times larger than what, what exists and is not as, as designed in a way that to really encourage people to be there in, in ways that the, the current streetscape along Morris Town in particular is not. And certainly that corner of, of Mount Airy and Morris Town is particularly unfriendly. So we, you will see, we'll show you later how we pulled that Palmer Building facade back in order to get, give everyone a nice, a nice landing spot when you cross the street. Next. So here is our, our proposed view along Morris Town Road. And you, you'll note that the sidewalk is a great deal wider than what is there now and that we have chosen to put the residential entry from an interior courtyard. So that archway leads to an interior courtyard, which allows the entire street frontage to be accessible and have visibility easily outside, be able to have outdoor dining. And we've managed to level it so that you can get out, out from those retail spaces to the out, out of doors. Next. In order to support the, the overall development, we are also proposing an underground parking garage that is accessible from the, 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 sorry, eastern edge of the site off of Morris Town Road. And so it's totally discreet. It's not, you're, you're not, as, as most multifamily developments end up with parking lots that you can see, all of the cars are, are hidden away. And on, on the western edge of the site off Mount Airy Road, we have a service area, which is, has a roll-up door, is completely hidden, hidden away. So loading, trash, all, all the things disappear. And the rest is paved, so it is friendly to pedestrians. So one of the interesting things about the site is it does slope almost the better part of a floor from the area next to the Masonic Lodge down to the, to the intersection of Mount Airy, Mindbrook, and, and Morris Town Road. So that's the way this, this plan is a little tricky to, to read because the, the retail is almost a floor, almost a floor lower. Next. And there's 138 parking spaces. This is a view reconstructed by our digital renderers. So it's exactly the same point and it shows that three feet from the curb line to the building that now exists from the Palmer Building. And the next slide shows what we're proposing is to remove what looks like an addition and while maintaining the architectural integrity of the Palmer Building and move that back so that we have a, a nice wide sidewalk and open up the building so that you can see from the outside to the inside. And imagine that this is a, a restaurant, which has great, will have great views, both looking down Mindbrook and indeed from out, out the outside in. And the next slide here shows the upper floor plan. So there, there, those apartment units, there's a, a total of three levels of, of apartments on top, on top of the first retail floor. And these wrap around this, an enclosed courtyard that you can actually get, catch glimpses of from the archway and also from the space between the existing Palmer Building and the, the, the new building that is proposed. And the roof, we show this only to show that, as opposed to some projects, we've given some thought. We don't want any of the mechanical equipment, air conditioning and ventilation to be visible so that they are actually in a, in a depressed well, so we can keep all that out of sight. And finally, we think one of the real centerpieces of, of Burnsville is going to be this corner plaza that's outside the existing Palmer Building is, has visibility into some of the other retail spaces. And I mentioned this idea of the little glimpse into the green courtyard that's behind, that you'll see through the, the, the little porch that is between the Palmer Building and the, and our proposed building. So that is our, our presentation for today. And we're, we're very, very proud of, of this, this building as a way to, to really give, give new vitality to the pedestrian experience, really respond to all the things that have been in the consultation and the, the that, that we've had in a very fruitful, and our clients have had in a very fruitful way with you all.
Muting myself there. Okay, thank you so much. I see a lot of people entered late, but if you didn't see the whole presentation, it is recorded, so you can watch, kind of catch up later if you want to see the whole thing. Before we open the public comment session, please keep in mind, this is not a question and answer session. And questions about traffic and parking will be addressed at the planning board. That's when they'll get into the final plans. Remember, this is a concept plan. This is a, a vision. The final plans go to the planning board and they review them to make sure that it fits within the redevelopment plan and the appropriate zoning. What this is, is an opportunity for you to comment on the concept plan that was just presented. If you can use the the raise hand icon on your computer and we will, I will, we can unmute you when you, your name is called. So let's see. There's a lot, we have 109 people here, 110, excuse me. Let me just see where we are. Got to scroll, scroll through this whole thing. David Windigo? And remember, please give your name and address, and if you can, turn on your camera. So you want to unmute David?
Sure, one second, I'm getting the camera. There with me. Here I am. Yeah, so my name is David Spence. And I'm very excited about this, this project.
Oh, just your address?
Can you? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So I'm a commercial property owner at 17 Morris Town, AKA the Burnsville News Building, formerly. The, the old train, the original train station, as we like to say. So anyway, yeah, I'm very excited by this project. Just some commentary on the, the scale of it. The, the last rendering shown, you know, suggests that there's stonework going all the way up. Full story. In that view, it seemed a little heavy and sort of rather large and, and height are very high. Also, the, the eaves or the fascia up at the roof line. I'm just wondering if the architects can take a look at whether that can be scaled down a bit. I think, I know there's a mandate to try to meet the, the number of units to make this project viable. So I think that's fine, but I, I'm just wondering about the overall scale of the building. It will be the largest and highest building in downtown Burnsville. And I'm, when I saw that view next to the, to the original building that's there, it, it does seem to sort of outscale it, if you will. So that is all of my comment and I enjoy seeing, seeing the progress.
Thank you. I just, can I ask? I don't know where he went. The architect, just put the picture up that shows the building next to the Masonic Temple. I think it, just to show that the scale here and the height wasn't that one. The one, the streetscape on 202. Not that, no. No, no, the picture, it's a photograph on 202. Going up the road, that one, that back, yes. The one you just had, that. If you look at this, you can see just beyond the tree, the top of the Masonic Temple.
Right.
I mean, just so you kind of get the sense of how, how it goes down, how the...
Sure, that, that, that part is perfectly fine. It's the other end next to the building that's being saved. When we go back to that view.
Yes, okay.
If we can go back to that view, that stone wall seems to dominate. Yeah, and you see the people alongside. I just questioned when you're walking along this, the scale of that stone wall and how it, in the building overall seems to dwarf the, the original building that's on the corner there. So I think there is opportunities for the roof lines to perhaps come down a bit. It can come down a bit. And again, while maintaining the, the apartment count that you're looking for. It does seem to be a full story or two higher than the building that's there. And yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Rhonda Pisano. Rhonda Pisano.
She looks frozen.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Rhonda Pisano, seventy five Mount Airy Road in Burnsville. And I guess I'm just reiter going to reiterate some of the comments the gentleman right before me made is that it, I think that this picture really shows how the Palmer Building is dwarfed. And it really looks to me out of out of sync. I feel like this building, the proposed building, is a little too high. I too would like to see the roof lines brought down. I also feel that it's a little bit intensive use. And I'm not sure if I'm reading this this plan correctly, but is there three sides of, is it a U shape? That this building is with a courtyard then in the middle?
Oh, pretty much, yeah.
Okay, so I don't think we really get a sense of that from the the plans because we're not really seeing it the other direction coming down towards the train station. So we're only seeing the 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 one side on Mount Airy where the traffic light is. I'm glad to hear that they're going to be removing that addition on the Palmer Building. So that was a concern of mine. So I'm I'm glad to hear that. But you really only then see the you don't see that it's really three sides and that it's a U shape, which is would give you a much bigger area, I think. Uh, let's see. Also, I'm just concerned about the parking underground. I don't know if that's going to be for both residential and for patrons.
Yes.
Okay, well, a hundred and sixty thirty nine or a hundred and thirty eight spaces. If you have got
Okay, again, just working on the details of parking is for the planning board.
Right, yeah, right. But if you're in the concept plan, I just think that this is important that according to the Census Bureau of May eighteenth, twenty twenty three, most people own two cars.
So you're actually running out of time. You have twenty seconds.
Okay, well, not if you're interrupting me. Okay, and I'm also just concerned about the egress and ingress and deep going in and out of just having one driveway. So that was it.
Thank you. Okay. Good point. Rosalie.
Hi.
Yes, we hear you. Name and address.
I don't know what's wrong with my video. Sorry, I'm having problems today with Zoom and my video, but can you hear me?
Yes.
Sweet and short, it's absolutely.
Wait, you name and address, please?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Rosalie Ballantyne.
I knew that.
Nineteen Pheasant Hill Drive.
Okay.
Okay, it's a wonderful concept, a wonderful development. I'm thrilled by it and all the attention paid to detail and fitting into our our dear Burnsville. Just one one fact that I've had all along, and I think people know about that. I just think I wish it could be one story less. Just the problem of scale, which reverberates in a lot of different areas, but I just wish it could be one story less less. So you'd have three stories and that's all. I think it's great and I'm excited.
Thank you, Rosalie.
Welcome.
Aaron, you are next.
Hello? Aaron Duff, fifty one Crestview Drive. I guess not, not surprised. This looks very similar to the plans that were submitted to the planning board back in March. Back when Councilman Greenfield was asking advance and the council to release the architectural plans for this property. The only thing I don't see there is the elevations that were submitted, just like the previous commentators were asking about. Where you can actually get a sense of scale of the new development, that four story apartment tower surrounding three sides of the one acre lot. Can't really see it so good from those CGI snapshots that you just get from low angles that cut off most of the mass of the building. And and that was, I believe, prepared by Mr. Sam Stern in March, two months before the redevelopment plan was adopted. The professionals from Stern pride themselves on understanding the site and hold themselves out on the experts as experts in the history of the site. I wonder if they took into consideration the history of the two buildings that are going to be raised for the apartment towers. They're both featured prominently in our H Pax Historical Downtown Walking Tour, Manker Hall, and also the James Boylan House, which was built in the seventeen hundreds by a surgeon who served in the Continental Army. And as far as I know, is one of the oldest buildings in our historic downtown district. Also mentioned specifically in our master plan as a building that should be preserved in any future development of Alcott Square. I was not able to see, and I don't know if these revised plans were posted anywhere prior to the nice meeting. But I wasn't able to see the I chart as far as the unit mix was concerned. When the planning board was asked to review this project, it was represented that the makes it mostly one bedroom. It doesn't look that way. Looks like a lot more two bedrooms, which means greater need for parking, greater impact on schools. As far as I can tell from the sidewalks, the redevelopment plan calls for nine feet all the way around. Doesn't look you get that on the corner there by the Palmer Building, which is being preserved. Looks like you get significantly less than that. I think a couple of our council members are on record as saying that's one of the most dangerous corners in the borough. And I would just like to point out that the underlying zoning in the downtown core requires eight feet sidewalks plus two feet setback. So it's ten feet from the curb to the building.
Aaron, you've run out of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, for those who are speaking, if you watch the clerk, he has a little little time clock up, so you can kind of see where you are in your in your comments. Allison?
Hello, it's actually Christopher Otto. How are you? I'm on my wife's.
Okay.
So
Address?
One ten Post Coonhard Road, Burnsville. So Ross Zazzarino and myself are running for council. And we just wanted to say that we are very pleased to see a project moving in the right direction. This is a great start. Me, myself, I am probably the top real estate expert in the state. And I'm getting involved here and I'm on planning specifically to make sure that this town is redeveloped and it's done responsibly. This project is a great step in the right direction, and I applaud the efforts of the developer for getting us here tonight. There's a lot more work to be done, but we are headed in the right direction. What we don't want in this town is any more hair salons. As I just heard that on Essex Street, the Essex Building, we have ten more hair salons opening up in one suite. So that is the old Burnsville that we want to get away from, and we want to put some life into our downtown, but responsibly. So that's it. I just want to say we're very excited for this redevelopment and the redevelopment of the remainder of the downtown. And I look forward to seeing this project and planning.
Thank you. I see Robin.
Okay. Robin. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I don't know. Is my video on?
No.
Sorry. Ah, I'm not so, I'm not so.
There you go.
There I am. Okay.
Yeah, it works.
Hi, I would just love to say, well, first of all, good evening, Mary Jane. Thank you for hosting, and I really would love to just say that I'm so excited about this project. I moved to Burnsville three years ago. I grew up in Bedminster and lived in Bedminster with my family for many years, and I moved to Burnsville on the promise that the entire downtown would be developed and walkable. And it's finally coming to fruition, so I'm so excited about that. And I just want to applaud Advanced Realty because I've I've seen their projects in other locations, and I think that the quality is top notch and what we're going to get here is amazing. So I really am urging all of our fellow neighbors and community members to please be on board with this because anything is better than what we have there. I am, you know, I owned my own businesses in the past in other towns. My husband owns his own business and we have lots of, you know, friends that are entrepreneurs and opening restaurants and opening businesses in other towns. And we keep asking them to come here. No one wants to come here with how our town looks right now. And we can't get the people and the quality that we want to open up new businesses here because of how it looks. And quite frankly, like previous gentleman just said, enough hair salons, enough nail salons, you know, we don't want neon signs and windows. We are, we're better than that, and our community is better than that, and it will only help our residential you know, the values of our residences and our community as a whole. So I really urge everyone to stop complaining and trying to fight this project and embrace this wonderful new development plan that we have and the company that we have delivering it for us is one of the best in the country. So I really feel like we should embrace it and encourage them moving forward.
Thank you, Robin.
You're very welcome. Have a great evening.
You too. Who do I see next? Ross. You need there, now you're unmuted. Name and address.
Ross Azarino, twenty six Childsworth Avenue. I want to thank the mayor and council for their careful planning of this project, and I'm excited for this plan because I think it's a step forward in the revitalization of our downtown. It provides upgraded units for businesses and needed parking for those units as well as increased sidewalk space. I think it's also an opportunity to stay in town for those who need to downsize and an opportunity for future homeowners to establish themselves in our community. So I'm very excited for this project and thank you for your work.
Thank you. Anyone else? I am not seeing. Jessica, did you want to say something? I don't know, I see a check next to your name. Jessica Walker. Why is there a check next to her name, Anthony? Do you see that?
If I can see her, I'll ask to unmute, but I'm not seeing her. I gotta scroll through the the screens. I see one more Kathy Peachy Razor. Oh, yeah, Jessica Walker, I see her. Yeah, I will ask to unmute and then, yeah, here we go.
I couldn't unmute everybody. Sorry about that. I was just saying I really agree with the last woman who just spoke, and I was just saying yes to those comments. Thank you all.
Okay, I couldn't figure you had a little green check.
It's just a reaction saying thumbs up.
Ah, got it. Thank you. All right, let me go back here and see who else has their hands up. Kathy Peachy.
Okay, hi, good evening. Kathy Peachy, seventy Chilton Street. Hi, everyone. I didn't hear too many complaints. I just heard comments and I appreciated listening. I also appreciated being able to watch the concept plan and listen to the presentation, so thank you for that. I did, I did think also, just to repeat some of the comments, was that on page twenty on the page twenty four rendering, I did think that the Palmer Building in comparison to the other buildings seemed a little bit dwarfed. And so that's my comment. There may be some way to address that. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Sure.
I see iPad twenty four. I don't know who that is. Anybody?
I I asked him to unmute. I think he might be frozen.
Yes, it's it's Althea Ridley.
Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes. Yeah, we can.
This is Althea. Althea Ridley, seventy Campbell Road.
Okay.
Okay, this is a bit awkward because I'm driving. And I'll just be quick. I think the rendering is beautiful. I have one question regarding the height. And since many people have commented that one less story might be better from a scale perspective within the road and other buildings and so on. And I'm just wondering if since it appears that the architectural rendering focuses on featuring what they consider the base to be, which is the Palmer Building, had consideration been done to more of an American look and something that would go back to the earlier roots within the town. And by the way, that might solve a problem with regard to the height.
Okay, thank you. All right, eyes on the road. Thanks, Althea. I have, did we find iPad twenty four?
Yes, that 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 was Ridley just now.
Oh, okay, that was that. So then I have Mr. Chopra.
Hey, my name is Manil. And my question is, how do publics, speaking of public, speaking to Donald Trump, help help the community solve a relationship with others without him getting arguably rude to others? And to help and help the modern nature out.
Okay, I think we're gonna just mute you.
Thanks.
All right. Do we have anybody else? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? If not, then I will ask if any of the council people would like to make a comment. Chad raised his hand. Where's Chad?
I'm here, Mary.
Ah, there you are. Okay.
No, I just, so I I wanted to, I I thought it was really great that Advance came here tonight. You know, this is a private piece of property and I it's always hard when when local governments sort of step into private affairs, and I'm very thankful for the partnership. I think Advance has been a great partner. They've come a long way in this plan. It was really nice that you guys spent the time to talk to the public today, and I'm thankful for you. So thanks for doing this tonight, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Chad. Any other council people want to comment? Don't see any. Don't see any. Oh, wait, Diane.
Hi. Um, I am concerned about the lack of adequate parking for the project, and I know.
Diane, we're not, we're not doing parking.
Well, this is the concept plan, so it it should be along with the concept plan. It's not enough parking for the guests, for the patrons, for the um employees of the ten thousand square feet. Of retail and office space that are going to be there, a hundred and thirty-eight, but is really not going to be adequate. I'm also concerned about where the moving trucks and delivery trucks will be um loading and unloading. Um, and will that add to the traffic? Will they be able to go um to the underground parking lot, or are they going to have a pullout? On Mount Airy Road that they're going to have to back out in traffic to um leave the property. Um, I'm also concerned with fire accessibility, fire department accessibility in the case of an emergency situation. Uh, will the fire truck be able to get into the underground parking lot and have um access to the back part? Of the apartment building that is facing the train track.
Okay, um, and those issues will be addressed at the zoning uh planning board, and there will be expert testimony on. Parking and. Uh, traffic, so that will be heard. Um, hopefully, they will cover all those issues. Um, anybody else?
I see Christine.
Christine.
Hi, Christine. I just want to thank everybody for taking the time out of their summer fun to come to this meeting. And I want to thank the architects for a very thorough presentation. Um, I agree with Chad. This was a very tough. Uh, back and forth, and they were very patient and very responsive to us throughout the process. So I greatly appreciate that. I also know that many towns have faced a lot of the same concerns that Diane and many residents do bring up. And I know they are not insurmountable. I know that we can work through them. I know that there are a lot of surface parking lots in town that will. Um, come into play to help. Get our parking problems solved. So. That's all my comments, really. I think it looks beautiful.
Thank you, Christine. Um, and by the way, this is also um not typical. Usually architects don't do this for the public, so I want to give an extra shout out. Um, to you for doing this um and for Advance for being here as well.
I haven't heard their comment.
Okay. You're still unmuted, yeah.
The um. Area in the center, uh the little courtyard area in the center of the U-shaped building that's on this one little acre property. Um, that is for residents only. That is not for the general public. So there is no um. Garden or green space for the public on this pro- in this project.
Anybody else out? Did you want to say something?
Uh, no, I'll just thank everyone. Uh, I agree. I appreciate the time that Vance put into the presentation. Thought it was uh. Well, very well done and explained, I think answered a lot of the questions, but mostly I want to thank the public. I mean, I think it was just. Excellent to have a hundred and nine people here tonight. I think it really shows the interest and the excitement. For downtown revitalization in this project, and I know um, you know, people really. It's tough in the middle of the summer, Thursday night um for people to make time to do it, but it just really shows how invested everyone is in the community. So. Thank you all for your time and attention.
Okay. Yeah, plus it's raining. Kind of nice it's on Zoom because nobody had to come out in the rain. All right, well, I will reiterate what um. I'll just said, and uh, thank you all for being here tonight. I think we have an executive session following.
I'm sorry, we have Pixel six A uh who hasn't spoken, who hasn't spoken yet.
Oh, well, I thought nobody else wanted to raise their hand. Okay, let's unmute him. Who is Pixel six A?
Uh, Carrie Hazelton.
Ah.
I'm on the road, so um Pixel six A apparently. I just wanted to follow up on what um, Chris, I think it was Christine who said that uh surface parking lots will be uh taking up some of the. Some of the burden when this uh project goes through, but. I I I'm I'm struggling to think what surface parking lots would do that. Um, they do look awfully full to me uh down by the train station already now. Uh, certainly by Grill seventy-three, they're full. The bank by the old library is privately owned. The the um library lot is full, uh even when the kids are not in school. And so I think if. That the council and the developer and the planning board should think about whether there's really going to be uh surface parking lots picking up. Uh, particularly since we're going to be putting in affordable housing in the one that's directly behind this. Development um in in the near future. So that was my only comment about that, besides the fact of the height, which. Others have mentioned before, so I won't belabor that point. But thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Carrie. Uh, okay, last call. Let's see, anybody else here? Is that it?
Not seeing anyone who who hasn't spoken already, so no.
Okay.
No one else.
All right. So thank you again for, it's really an impressive turnout. I don't think we've had this many people come to a meeting, which is great. We love to have the community engaged. Um, so at this point, I think I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second? Oh, there's, we need a. Alan, Alan seconded.
Uh, yeah, I will second. We are unable to unmute.
Yes.
Yes, now now they can unmute.
I was, I was fighting with Anthony.
So thank you again to uh Kevin and. Uh, you guys for being here tonight. And again, for anybody who came in late. This is being recorded, so you can watch the presentation again and reach out with comments if you'd like. All right, we are now in executive session, so good night to all of you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
I I will stop the recordings and and uh move the the some boxes.
Yeah, you have.